Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
With that, good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting of April 25th. We're at the Bennington Fire Facility. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and I chair this board and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Hi, I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening, thank you for coming. I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Hello, everybody. Bruce Lee Clark.
Lovely. And also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Hurt. We have Nancy Lively, taking excellent minutes as always. And we have Jim Vires on the camera at Cat TV. Yay. All right. So with that, the first thing I want to do is add an agenda item, if I might. I'm going to ask, would we be okay to add a 7A? So, or actually a 6, a 6A. So after implementing Town Vision and before managers' report, we've, the police department has requested a small revision to the special events and demonstrations policy specifically to increase the number of individuals that trigger the event form. Could I have a motion?
I would move that change.
Thank you.
I'll second that, but I believe that would be 6B, correct?
That, it would be, it would be 6, 6A or B.
Those are minor things.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Great. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much. All right, with that, let's begin as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim?
I pledge allegiance to the United States as a government, to the republic which is our own, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Jim. And then Jeanne, would you please read the vision statement that guides everything we do?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right. Then next up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you. And we have second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? I did that in reverse.
Yes.
Let's not. Don't say aye. Don't say aye. No, don't say aye. Let's have a discussion. Anything that hasn't been brought to Nancy's attention or Stu's attention.
Wait, I had one question on a warrant.
Sorry, it's a short agenda. I was going to make it shorter.
Stu, I have one question. It is on page four, about a third of the way down, 327565. I'm assuming that is for the construction of the path.
I'm sorry, I, because my copies are with the chair at the present time.
Okay.
Are you talking about the minutes or the warrants?
The warrants.
Sorry about that.
What's the number?
Page four.
Okay.
About a third of the way down, 327565, Markowski Excavation, excavating.
That is the pathway.
Okay, thank you.
If you had said Markowski excavating, I would, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks. Thanks, yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Let's vote again, for real this time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And I note that part of the liquor licenses were two new licenses, one for apartment color house and one for American Dream Restaurants, which is Pizza Hut. It's changing management, so they need a new license. I'll circulate those for security.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we have three people up for citizen comment. John Lamson, let's start with you in the legal project. And so, John, I neglected to say, so the, for public comment, try and keep your comments to three minutes if you can. And if there are questions following your comments, then we'll, we'll ask them immediately. Otherwise, if you, if you have any questions that are accompanying your comment, then, you know, have a seat and we'll try and, and take care of those.
I will. Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you about a project that I think could be very beneficial to both students here in Bennington, as well as those in our community who are most vulnerable and most in need. First, I would like to apologize, as this process has been way, way faster than I have anticipated or expected. I came up with this idea and then immediately it was jumped on by several different people and said, "We have to apply for funding right now." And so that was, that was not how I anticipated this to go, but I do understand, having worked in the grant world, that sometimes grants are available and you have to apply for them or you're not going to get them. So I thought it was worthwhile to explore. And this is for, I've distributed, I had nine copies of our proposal for what I will call the Bennington Legal Clinic. And I'll give you a little bit of background and then just tell you about the project itself. So I am an educator at the Southwest Tech Center here in Bennington and I teach the pre-law class, which is a unique program that allows career and college-bound students to explore the legal services career pathway in the many careers, not just lawyer and judge, but all the legal services that we provide here in, right here in Bennington. My background is in the nonprofit world. I, for 11 years, I represented victims of domestic violence at Have Justice Will Travel, a nonprofit legal services provider here in Bennington and in Rutland. I went to Vermont Law School and participated in the South Roylton Legal Clinic there. When I started teaching, about four years ago, I took over the program from Bruce Lee Clark, your colleague here. And when I started teaching, I noticed that my colleagues in auto trades and forestry and building trades, among others, provided students with real-world experience by bringing the profession into the classroom and having actual shops and businesses that were associated with the program. And I thought, why couldn't I do that? I didn't see a reason why students, even high school students, couldn't participate in real legal cases supervised by a practicing attorney. Obviously, some content areas would not be good for high school students, but others are perfectly fine. And one of the areas that we would like to focus on, that we put in the proposal, was housing. You know, evictions and housing issues would be something I think that students would be interested in. Another area would be environmental law. As we've experienced the effects of PFOA here, that's certainly something that high school students are already discussing the legal implications of. And so the proposal goes into some more detail about exactly what it is that's being proposed, but this is a, I'm, I had written this proposal for a federal grant through Senator Sanders' office for federal funding for the first year. And we're hopeful that that will be funded and, but we're asking the Select Board if you would, I humbly ask you for a letter of support for the project. And so it's, there is more detail in the copies. I can also provide you with a digital copy. I can email it to whoever I need, the clerk, so that everybody can get a digital copy. But I would welcome any questions that you have. Sorry, I tried to be quick there.
Are there copies for us or no?
Copies of them. They wouldn't.
Oh. Jeez, I'm sorry. Some of us have copies.
I didn't even know.
She was busy tapping.
It's great. So, John, so my understanding is that this would involve students from the Tech Center, from Bennington College and CCB?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so area, area students, which is kind of cool.
Yeah, so the, the idea of the project is to take students from, it would be a combined class, combined classroom and class of high school students, Bennington College students, CCB students. They would all sign up for what I think people understand as a dual enrollment, we call it fast-forward now, but a dual enrollment class where they would get, high school students would receive college credit, college students would be taking a college class. And, but the class itself would be participating in this legal clinic and working on real cases supervised by an attorney. And the idea would be, the attorney would be provided by Vermont Legal Aid. I would work as the director and also the educator, because what I thought was really great about the legal clinic that I worked in at law school was it involved a classroom component. So it wasn't, you, you worked on the cases and got that experience, but you also understood the, you could, you could dive more deeply into the educational part and the, the legal concepts and theories behind the cases with the professor and instructor.
Great. Questions? Other questions?
Could you say a little bit about, like, where you might be, is there, is there a location that you're thinking of at this point, at least temporarily, regarding this clinic, if you get the money?
So in the grant, we note that because this is kind of a, David, Professor David Bond at the Center for the Advancement of Public Action at Bennington College has been writing this grant with me. And Bennington College is willing to allow us to use space that they have in the Putnam Block for a reduced rent. And so that's noted in the budget. Obviously, we are exploring any option that we can get to, to have office space. It would need to be enough space to provide the attorney an office and waiting area, but also some sort of conference areas where the students could have their classroom part. That doesn't necessarily have to be at the same location. You know, the, the classroom could be at a separate location than the office, potentially. But, but I think this space in Putnam would work for the, as I say, for the first year if this grant funding comes through. But sustainability is really an important piece of this. And so we would be looking to have a home and have a location that could represent the legal clinic and sort of have a base of operations.
Great.
That could work out to be the Putnam space, but it could work out to be another municipal space possibly too. I, you know, that's.
Did you, Stu, did you want to say something?
I'm concerned that this is not public comment, but really an agenda item.
It does feel sort of like an agenda item, except that I think what you're asking for is a letter of support. So I think, let me ask the pleasure of the board, are you, yeah, go ahead.
When do you need the letter?
It's, we have already submitted the grant on Friday, this past Friday. So we're anticipating that if we essentially become like a finalist for this grant, that additional letters of support could be provided, like, within the next month or so.
Okay.
So this is not, we're not, I'm not looking for this tonight.
Thank you.
I'm looking for you just to consider it and maybe at the next meeting you could.
Fine.
Okay. So then maybe what we can do is, will you know by the next meeting whether this is something we should pursue?
I don't know.
Okay. So why don't you keep us in the loop and?
Absolutely.
It could be on the agenda.
And then we can put it on the agenda as an agenda, because it does sound like a really exciting project.
Great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next up, Nancy White.
Hi, Nancy White, Bennington. I'm requesting that at your next meeting, you place the lease-to-purchase agreement for the Ben High on the agenda and go over it line by line with the public. I'm shocked that you haven't already done that, even though Stu signed it at the end of last month. I'll go through the few questions I have quickly. A year ago, I called into a Select Board meeting and asked if the state of Vermont had been inspecting the work that had already been done at the Ben High. Stu said he didn't know. The rest of you didn't know. I raised concerns about mold and asbestos. Many of us who went to the meeting at the Senior Center last month thought when we left the meeting that the town of Bennington was going to own the entire Ben High building and land within the next two years. We were told you were swapping the senior building for the Ben High. We saw that you were committing 1.1 million in ARPA. If our town isn't going to own that building in two years, please explain what's going to happen. How much will Shire's Housing pay the town of Bennington to own 70% of the Ben High? And when will that bill be paid in full? Last, at neither of your last two meetings or at the meeting at the Senior Center, the public was never told that someone was going to post a notice in the Bennington banner and on the town website. The notice says that the town will be selling the Senior Center, Senior Center building and land. It says the public has 30 days to sign a petition to block the sale. I question if it's legal. You're not selling it. You're giving it away. It doesn't mention that the property is valued at over three-quarters of a million dollars. It doesn't mention that the people of Bennington have owned and paid for that building for over 40 years. So I'm asking that you hold that until the public understands what's going on. And then if we choose to get the petition within the next month or two, we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy.
That's it?
Okay. So please, does anyone have a question for Nancy right now? Then please sit down.
I could, I could answer at least.
Please, well, please sit down and then we'll answer your questions.
Okay. And I'll contact whoever the chair will be tomorrow. Right now, you're violating my rights under the American with Disabilities Act. When you added the new censorship at the meeting last week, you stopped to think about the people who may be coming in here who are covered under the umbrella. People who may be physically challenged, people who are visually challenged. I talked to somebody at the regional level about this today and they did have concerns. So I said I would contact the chair tomorrow to see what accommodations you will be making, because you mentioned nothing about this tonight. We're at the last meeting.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. So, Stu, do you want to start from the top?
Yes. The, the notice is required. If the town intends to dispose of any property, we need to give notice to the public that that is a potential. So the notice has been posted. People can challenge that because of the timing, if they wish, but at the present time, that is required by law. So we felt that when we signed the lease, which provides that if, if after 19 months, I think it is, we, we are not prepared to take charge of the building because of problems that have existed, then our lease terminates. You're talking about Ben High? Ben High, yes. If, in fact, we are proposed to go forward after 19 months, then the Senior Center would transfer. So that notice was required under law. We needed to do that. I, I don't have answers for all of her questions. I think she's been at least at one presentation. At the Senior Center, I also followed that with a second presentation to the seniors. Seniors are going to be involved in this process all the way. So I, I think that we are in the process of doing an analysis, air handling first. Those test results should be available within the next few weeks. And other tests will be performed as needed in order to access the building, because essentially it's part of our due diligence, we need to do that work.
So at this point, we are doing our environmental due diligence to make sure that the building is one that we could actually utilize?
That's correct.
Right? And that goes before anything else that we do.
That's correct. And, and as to details of how the Shires will, what role they will play or how they will play the role, those things have not been worked out, because we, we're not at a point where we can say, yes, the building is ours, it's ready, we're moving forward. So the board has authorized us to proceed as staff and we are doing so.
So at this point, our lease gives us 18 months, I believe, maybe 19, 18 or 19 months to do.
Well, whatever it is, yes, 18 months is fine.
To do our due diligence to determine how we could best use that. And this board has authorized ARPA funding toward, toward what we need to do. The agreement that we have is less expensive than if we just continue to rent the portion of the building that we are now leasing.
That's right. And, and we needed, we needed site control in order, in order to be able to do all of the testing that is required. So it's, it's what we need to do. I think we've laid it out pretty well for, for the public. We don't have all the answers for the public at the present time, but I think we're proceeding in due haste.
And I do think, because we did have a public meeting where we went through the lease and we agreed to it, that the best step, unfortunately, Nancy, I hate to say this to you, but to talk with Stu, because we have had a public meeting where we went through this. So what we are doing at this point, our fingers are crossed that everything is going to come back hunky-dory and that it is a building that we can use, but we have to make sure it's environmentally sound before we move forward. So, you know, we can have all the great plans and all the partners that we wish, but the first step is to make sure it's a building we can actually use. So that's where we are. But the, we had a full discussion of the contract at a meeting. I don't know if you were there or not, but it is taped if you were not. So, all right. So I think that is, I think that answers all the questions that I have down for that. Okay. So, moving on, let's see. Bennington Trail Fest.
You didn't answer my question.
We did answer your questions, Nancy. You may not like the answers, but we did answer your questions. Trail Fest.
I'm here with a couple of other friends. You probably all know that Bennington was designated an official Appalachian Trail community, thanks to a group of volunteers who submitted an application to the Appalachian Trail Conservancy.
Would you introduce yourself first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Michael Wyda. I'm a new resident here in Bennington. I've been here three years. I think I'm still new.
I'm Jonas Spivak, Town Communications Coordinator, part of the leadership team that worked on getting Bennington designated an Appalachian Trail community. And we're also here with?
Ken Millman. I've been a resident since 2018.
So one of the responsibilities of being an Appalachian Trail community is that we hold a special annual event. So we are planning our first Trail Fest that will take place on July 30th at the new expanded community center. I'll give you a little bit of sample of some of the things that we're planning. There will be activities for children, there's going to be a lot of learning tables, skill building, there's going to be a trivia game, there's going to be live music, there's going to be free food. There is going to be free samples of products made in Vermont that hikers might like to take in their backpacks, gorp and soap and various things like that. And it's from noon to 3:00, if I didn't say that. What we would like to do is just to get this on the radar and then come back, maybe in June, and give you more details, because we're still finishing the planning. We, we'll have a map, we might have some slides for you. There's a big banner that's being printed that we hope to put on the Putnam Block. And so it's going to be a family-friendly event and, and part of our responsibility and to build interest in the Appalachian Trail community and in Bennington. I think one of the real goals of this is to heighten Bennington as a place where people will want to come. And so we, we're going to have a program, a printed program, we're getting businesses are buying ads for the program. We've already, I think, received about nine businesses who have become supporters of, of us as a designated community. So anyway, we're doing a variety of things and we'd like to come back in June if the Select Board were so.
What was the date? July?
July 30th.
30th, okay.
From noon to 3:00.
Okay. Fantastic.
Did I leave anything out, gentlemen?
No, you got all the good stuff.
Oh, no. Greg Van Houten is going to be providing live music with the hashtags.
Are you aware that we received that letter and a survey from a Virginia Tech student who's studying designated AT towns?
No.
And I filled out my survey.
Me too.
Yeah, we got it in our packet last month, last week, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I was not aware of it.
Yeah, it's cool.
That survey by Virginia Tech was specific to municipal leaders and government officials. And they were trying to weigh, what is the effect of having a trail community designation for your town? So it was definitely appropriate and timely for us in Bennington.
Yeah.
And we're just getting started.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who would like to speak today?
Madison. So I, I've been in person, I didn't know you had to sign up. I apologize. My name is Madison Kramer. I am Development Assistant and Communication Specialist with Shire's Housing. And I'm actually here with two different hats on my head for, to talk about two different things. I'll start off, I just wanted to spread the word and let the public know about some efforts that are near and dear to my heart and to the hearts of a lot of community members. Shire's Housing is working with the Turning Point Center, Vermont Foundation of Recovery and Mission City Church to develop two recovery residences in Bennington. This has been much needed for a long time and identified as a need by the hospital, a lot of healthcare organizations, housing organizations, and a lot of others. Each quarter of 2020, 570 Bennington County residents received treatment for substance use disorder. And that number is unfortunately only going up, especially with the pandemic. Unfortunately, treatment doesn't fully address the needs of an individual, the social and environmental situations that might influence their substance use. So getting out of treatment and returning right back to the homes and people where you once used is incredibly difficult to maintain sobriety. We know that recovery residences work to help reduce the rate of recidivism and relapse and to get people situated and able to live a longer, healthier, happier life. They work around the country and around the state. But unfortunately, the closest recovery residence is in Rutland and there's nothing south of there. You know, for people to drive 55 miles is just not feasible. You're not connected to your family, your support networks, your healthcare providers. We really need something in Bennington and this, we finally have the coalition of partners, a lot of the resources and the plans to make this happen. And I'm here today because unfortunately, that's not enough yet. We're facing a gap of about $120,000 because of the rise in costs, especially gas and labor and material costs. And because recovery housing isn't eligible for a lot of the affordable housing funding that's out there. And recovery is a need throughout the state and so the resources that are out there for specifically recovery are so spread thin. So we're working very hard to raise money through fundraising and grant writing, but we're asking the community, community broadly, not the Select Board, to help us in raising $60,000. And if every resident of the town of Bennington gave just $4, we would reach that very easily. So I'm hoping that this isn't as big of an ask as it might feel. If anybody should like to help make this happen, you can go to shireshousing.org/donate. And I really hope that you'll help us in making this happen. So that's all for recovery housing. I have another thing to discuss briefly, but if anyone has questions or Select Board members want to ask anything about that.
Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Go on.
Putting on my other hat, not Shire's Housing, Window Dressers is coming into our second year in Bennington. It's an effort, it's a nonprofit in Maine that has built window inserts to insulate homes and businesses in Bennington. I think we built 250 last year. And it's honestly really fun to do, to build these inserts. And it makes such an impact on reducing drafts in homes, reducing heating bills, especially right now, and just feeling more comfortable in your own home. We're looking to build more inserts. We actually have, this is the opposite issue to the one Shire's Housing is facing. We have too much fun. funding from incredible donors to help reduce the cost of inserts for low-income families. So where inserts usually cost between $30 to $60, depending on the size, folks who, for whom that is a barrier, can get these inserts for free. We just ask that to keep our costs low, folks volunteer and help us making this happen. And that can be anything from making cookies for volunteers to using power tools if you're able, or just using a roll of tape. Like I said, it's really fun. Our next community build is in October, but we have funding that will expire in June if we don't use it. So if anybody needs inserts for your home, you can sign up at windodressers.org.
When's the build this year?
We don't have a date set just yet, but it, we are looking at mid-October likely. And there's a build in Bennington and one in the North Shire as well. And they're clear inserts built of pine, double-sided with a polyethylene film, so you can see right through them. They come out really easily, pop right in really easily, so even renters can use them in their homes without issue from their landlord.
Great.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate your support.
Anyone else who didn't sign up who would like to speak? No? Okay. All right. So then let's move on to boards and commissions. So, really excited. It's the time of year where we look for people who want to step up and serve on town boards and commissions. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six boards. Is that true? Seven boards, seven boards that have openings this year. The, the, all you need to do to apply is to go to the website and click on boards and commissions, and you will see all of them listed, including how many open seats and a short descriptor of the various boards and commissions. The, Jonah very ably put all the information up, and the, the applications, which is really just a letter of intent, opened today, and it runs through Monday, May 16th at 4:30 in the evening. All right? So go to the town website and just see what's there that you're interested in. It does include the new Community Policing Advisory Review Board, of which there's seven members. And for anyone that's applying who is new to a board, there is a short interview that we will do. The interviews, we are hoping, will be the week of May 23rd. So board, we should just look at that week so we know what our availability is as well. So a quick, just a short letter saying that you're interested and why you're interested, and then we will reach out and schedule a time to sit down and chat with you. So...
If anybody wants mine, they're welcome to it.
But it's on, it's on the web, and you can, there's a link where you can, you can get any information, any information you want. Yes?
Yes.
All right. Any questions, comments on that? We're good. Oh, so the other thing is we also have select board positions to go along with some of those. So we try and rotate positions every year. So the library liaison position that's held by Tom right now, looking for if there's another select board member who'd like to take over that. BBC liaison, which I currently have, again, if somebody wants to do that. The energy committee member, it's actually a member of the seven-person board. Bruce is currently that member, if somebody's interested in that. And then the CPAR, if we didn't make a final decision, but I think if someone on the select board is interested in being a liaison to that group, certainly that's under consideration too. So, lots of moving parts for the next month, which is great. Okay. Then implementing the Town Vision updates there, I think we have two things. One is to look at the next and hopefully final draft to file a complaint or compliment, and then also an update on the Juneteenth celebration. So Bruce, do you want to lead us through the compliments and complaint?
Hopefully, everybody has read it. There are very, I think they were mostly just moving things around. There's no substantive changes from what you have seen before. And so, are there any questions from the board? I, I see nothing.
Yep. So then, if there are no, if there are no questions, any questions or concerns or comments from the public?
I will then move its adoption.
All right. Do we have, okay, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Great. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Would you like me to send a clean, non-line numbered copy to Stu or to...
Yeah.
I think we have it, Bruce.
You have the one without line numbers?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah, we'll put it up tomorrow.
Good. Excellent. Great.
All right. Then, Juneteenth.
Yeah, let's see. So last two weeks ago, there was a meeting the following night which Jeannie attended, and I did not go, but I was provided with the minutes. So I'm just going to give a super quick recap of their April 12th meeting. The first topic was just confirmation of the date, which again, this is for Juneteenth. It's June 18th from 12 to 3 at the middle school. There's many, many partners, too many for me to list, but there's been a tremendous response from the community, and some individuals have stepped up. Student groups have stepped up to participate. They're working on promotion materials. There are speakers that are going to be present. There's music, a drum circle, and there's a whole list of to-dos. This is a big event to plan. So, but that's where they are right now, and the next meeting is scheduled for May 3rd. So you can look forward to an update from me after that.
Excellent. And if someone wants to be connected with us, should they contact Jonathan?
I would say, yeah. I have his email. It's Jonathan.Phipps, P-H-I-P-P-S, at S V S U dot org. He's the, he's the equity coordinator for the school system.
Great.
You're welcome.
Lovely. Thank you. All right. Then, our new agenda item, 6A or B, special events and demonstrations. So the, we've been asked by the police department to increase the triggering number for the event form from 25 to 75. And so I know, I see the chief and lieutenant are here. I don't know if you want to speak to it, or you're welcome to if you would like to.
Good evening. Paul Doucette, Chief of Police and Public Safety Director. This is very quick and to the point. When we first adopted this new policy and procedures, we thought we were on track with, with our safety concerns. And, and the lieutenant and I have become event planners, and quite, quite honestly. And although it's fun meeting with lots of people in Bennington and planning events, phew, it's very time-consuming. And I'll give you a great example. We just celebrated Earth Day. If you weren't able to, to get there, it was pretty fantastic. Jeannie got up and actually spoke highly of the police department and our bicycles and our, and our hybrid cruisers. And, and I did see the, the window insert presentation. Fantastic idea. I wish I had that when I was going to college. My propane bill might have been a little less. But anyway, that's not what this is about. So we have asked that this be increased from 25 to 75. I just, I just think it's better for the community. Nothing else changes. Road closures, alcohol, all of that other stays in place if it's on public property. The only thing we're asking is that if there is 75 people or more that are anticipated to attend, that's, that's when they would meet with Lieutenant Grandy or I, and, and we would, we would press on and make sure that their event was successful as far as safety and security and proper planning. So that's what we're looking for.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would move that.
All right. All right. Any discussion?
The 25 was a shot in the dark in the first place, so this is, this is fine.
Well, it's great to know that there's so many events that are more than 25 people.
And that, and that's what we, that's what we, we talked about, but there is, there's a lot of events that have far more than, than, than the 25. And it's, it's fun and interesting to learn of all of the positive things that are happening in Bennington this summer, you know, with Hemmings and Jenny at PBC and so on and so forth. And so we just want to make sure we do this right and that we do have proper safety and security. And in fact, if, if this is approved, Ms. Jenkins, I've already prepared this document for your signature at the end of the night.
You're not really late. Did you have a question, Jean?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? Yep. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Stuart, you're up next.
Yes. Two, two action items tonight. The first being the increase in the transfer station pricing. It's been a number of years. We've been almost 20 years with Casella at the transfer station. This is really the first overall price increase that they have asked for. Originally, when we talked about this at the select board meeting, there was a concern about the facility becoming a private facility and a tax having to be paid. That has been resolved because they are actually paying that tax at the landfill when the material is delivered. So the price increase that they originally proposed has been reduced substantially. We're talking about an increase in a per-bag charge from $3.75 to $4.25. The overall per-ton cost, I think, will increase approximately 10%. And so it's a relatively small increase from what we were anticipating because of that potential tax. So that was the good news, and I would seek a motion from you folks to approve these fees.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Stu, the, the, I'm happy with all of this, with one question about food scraps. And the only reason I raise that is that I, I will be happy to be the first person to admit I've gone up to the transfer station any number of times and have never declared that I'm sticking food into the food scrap barrels. Do they really collect a dollar per gallon for food scraps from little old folk like me?
I don't think they have been. They are seeking to do so.
Well, it's on their website, interestingly enough, as, as a dollar a gallon. I've just, just, if other folks are paying it, I just had never realized that we were supposed to be paying. And I don't take a gallon, but I take, you know, I didn't even know how I would measure it.
You can bring it to my house.
Well, yeah, but that's not going to help the community. You don't want the whole community bringing all of their food.
No, just you. Just you. No, just you.
Most of my food scraps go in my compost pile in the backyard. It's just the stuff that I can't put in there. So that's what I'm, you know, so, I'm, I take it I'm supposed to declare that when I get up to the...
And bring your quarter with you.
And bring my, yeah, because it's going to be about a quart worth, maybe. Is that how this works? I mean, I, the only reason, we don't know. Okay. I'll ask when I get up there, because...
I think it's compost. I think it's bringing your fruits and vegetables.
It says food scrap. Yeah.
But then it's next to it that says compost. So I think what they're saying is if you don't have a compost...
I think it does refer just to compost material that you can compost in your backyard.
Right.
Right.
You're asking them to separate in compost.
So if I'm just dropping off my chicken bones?
No.
No.
No, that goes in with your garbage.
No. No, it doesn't. No, my garbage goes into my compost pile, and my non-compostables go to the bins at the transfer station.
I just wanted to know. This maybe should happen elsewhere, but, um, yeah.
Yep. Yep. I'm, I've gotten my answer. Nobody seems to know, except folks out here.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion?
Yep.
To approve. And a second?
Second. And yes, so just to clarify that, compost was a dollar and it's now a dollar?
Yes. Thank you.
No change to that.
Thank you. All right. So any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the new, of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Okay. Great.
The second action, action item is necessitated only because the state of Vermont demands that we do this. We have two current fire wardens in place. Matt Hathaway is the current forest fire warden. Henry Higgins is the current deputy fire warden. They are switching positions. Matt Hathaway needs to step back a little bit from those responsibilities, and Henry has agreed to step forward. The state is requiring that we go through a process where you appoint them. I have two forms for your signatures. They have been filled out appropriately. And in fact, the commissioner was in town today, oddly enough, and wondering if we were going to be pursuing these things this evening. So if you all agree, I will circulate these two changes for signatures. The terms for the appointments run still until June of 2024, so that does not change for either individual. So unless you object, I'm going to circulate these for signatures.
Seems, so you just need a, do you need a motion? You just need a sense of...
You can do it by motion. I have, I have requested a motion here, but I don't think it's essential.
Anyone have any concerns? Sorry. All right. Circulate. Yes. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From an informational point of view, we received notice that the waters below our wastewater treatment plant are now being placed on the impaired waters list. It is apparently a draft list, which has just been posted. The public comment period runs until May 20th of this year. I don't have a lot of information, other than the fact that it is being listed because the nutrient levels are high in the waters, higher than they should be in the waters below the wastewater treatment facility. We believe it may relate to the outdated sand filter that we use during the summertime. It is not required to be used otherwise, but we are in the process of going through an engineering process to upgrade the sand filter, and we believe that may reduce the impaired waters. They are listed as a low priority impairment, so it's not anything that people should be really, really, really concerned about. But the state goes through this process every year where they look at impaired waters. And I would also note that the Battenkill made the list this year for other reasons. I don't have the information with me. And some small waters within the county are now being listed for impairment due to nutrient levels or other levels specific to farming practices or other reasons that the waters are being contaminated. But we don't have control of those. This one, the town of Bennington, does, and therefore we, we need to relate to it.
Can you remind us on the, the timing on replacing the sand filter?
We'll probably be looking over the next two years. It's a, it's a, we, it's a design and then construction. We'll look to the state of Vermont for funding assistance. We would, depending on the cost, more than likely either look to some of the infrastructure monies that are coming from the state, some, I think they have $2 billion to distribute, and water, wastewater issues are high priorities. So we may be able to access those monies, or we may need to bond. It depends on the actual cost, but it's, it's going to be an expensive process. Second informational issue, many of you may know, the hydrant flushing is underway. It began today in Bennington. It will contend, contend, contend... It will continue, continue over the next two weeks until May 6th. If your water turns out to be cloudy or dirty after a hydrant in your neighborhood has been flushed, run the cold water only. Do not try to do a laundry right after the hydrant's been flushed, because when we flush the hydrants, we stir up a lot of the sediment that gets into the water system. And so please, run your cold water till it's clear and you should be fine. In many cases, you won't see any change at all. But a lot of the ends of the system where you have dead-end lines, that's where the problems occur. So please, use care.
Stu, do you want to caution them about why they should not run their hot water, especially if they have a hot water heater?
Well, it's because the sediment gets into your outwater heater.
There you go.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I would have thought that would be obvious, but you're right, Jim. I shouldn't assume those things.
No, I appreciate it.
And then the last, last thing, there are two, two events coming up on May 7th. Greenup Day is usually the first Saturday in May. And we are, the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance is, is also proposing to operate its hazardous waste collection day at the middle school once again. We normally try not to keep those two on the same day because they pull people in two directions. Unfortunately, the schedule has been set. We have a contractor in place. So that'll be nine to one at the middle school. Bring your household hazardous wastes and we'll take care of them. That's, I think, all I have. One follow-up. Last, at the last meeting, an individual questioned the intersection of Benma, Burgess Road and Main Street. And how unsafe that is to exit Burgess Road onto Main Street because of the very acute angle that you're trying to look back. I did check with the regional commission. It is not considered a high-traffic accident location. And what we are looking into is whether or not there is sufficient right-of-way there to perhaps try to turn that Burgess Road slightly to be more at a right angle. We've done that with other obtuse and acute-angled intersections throughout the community. This is one that if we can do it, we'll, we'll try to do it that way. We're, we're not certain we have sufficient right-of-way.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Stu, I had, I was asked a question by someone about how a no-burn order comes down. That's not, is that from the state that-
Yes.
Just, okay.
Yes, that is generated from the state. They are generally passed to the fire wardens who then pass them to us. And we, we send out, we won't, we won't issue burn permits at that time. We also send out a notice to individuals who have burn pits or fire pits where they can have small fires throughout the year, that there is a danger. And as you probably all read in the paper, there was a fire that got away from an individual that caused some damage on Burgess Road, just because of the high winds. Not necessarily dry conditions, although I've seen just recently, there's, there's starting to be concern about the dry conditions, in spite of all the rain we've had.
So if someone were to, to want to know if there was a no-burn order in place, where would they go?
Not at this time.
But where would they go to find out?
Town of Bennington. Call the town offices.
Call the town. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else for Stu before we move on? All right. Okay. Upcoming agendas. Let's see. I know of three things. We'll have the first public hearing to amend the town plan and the land use development regulations.
Correct. And that's for the S V C property.
Okay. And then our Bennington Police Department is going to give us an update at the next meeting.
About John Lamson.
And John might be or not, yeah, depending. He'll, he'll alert us. And then we also will have a training proposal for CPAR.
Correct.
Okay. So that's what I have. And then the following meeting in May, the BBC will be here with their work plans and budget. Department of Health is asked to come and talk to us about health equity as part of equity and inclusion. And then we'll have a second public hearing on the amended town plan as well. So good. All right. Anything else on the agenda? Yeah?
So I'm not positive that this was going to go on here, but I just want to put it on there just in case if people want to take it off. Speak sooner, may want to present at the next meeting.
Okay. Speak sooner. Okay. All right.
And that's regarding an event they are going to have. So that may not be-
But they want it, is that a public comment then? I mean-
It may go more than, longer than three minutes, that's why.
Yeah, but it needs to be something we're actually making a decision on if it's a, yeah. Okay. Let's, let's check on it.
That's why I'm just stating, let's just stick it there and we can always take it off.
Okay.
So Jeanne, you did have the legal clinic as at least-
I have John as a, yeah, as a, as a legal clinic as a question mark. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Put it in.
All right. Great. Other business. Gary, you have anything tonight?
Nothing.
Tom? No. Jim? Jean? I do. So Healthy Kids Day is this Saturday at the community center outside. Lots of games, lots of table sitting, lots of activities. It's from 12 to 3 this Saturday. It's free and it'll be wonderful. They're anticipating a couple hundred people-
Where?
With kids at the community center. So at the rec center. So Healthy Kids Day, 12 to 3. All right. So let's see. So we have need to go into executive session for legal matters and contracts with no intention of taking formal action this evening. So we will not be coming back out. So-
I would move that we enter into executive session for those purposes that you just stated.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Let me see.